I'd like to call the meeting to order, may I have a roll call please? Okay, I'll do this. Kimberly Smith Colaga here, Rebecca Haynes here, Hillary Stokowski here, Jeff Zofe here, Melissa Clark here, Dan Salter here, Charlie Stone here, Jan Meek here, Diane Zedan here, Isakavuno here. Thank you, may we put standard of the pledge of allegiance?
Leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any public comments? Thank you, Dan.
No, do not.
Thank you, Maria, do you happen to see anybody with their hands raised? I do not have any hands raised. Very good, thank you. Now we're going to move on to our bond update. We're fortunate to have our guests to help us walk through this, and I'm going to turn it over to Dan.
First, thank you, everybody. I hope everybody had a great holiday. And got spending some good quality time with their family, their friends, and just get out and do whatever it is you need to do. It's crazier with COVID and the incidents that have happened over at Oxford. I hope everybody was able just to get away from it all and spend some time with their families. I know I did. I got to with Escanaba for a while and spent some time with my wife's family, so that was great, so. But it's good to be back, good to be back, good to get going. For bond update, Jan Meek has really led the charge for our district more than anybody else. She's been on top of things, doing a great job with her, with the whole team. We've got together with our, with our construction managers, our architects, and everybody else involved, and I think we got a really good plan moving forward with how we are going to start with the construction and spending the money that the taxpayers give us for the, for the pound. First thing that we kind of decided and that we talked about and open for questions is when we talked about the turf football. For a lot of different reasons, and our guests here in America probably give you more details than I can, but for a lot of different reasons, we decided not to necessarily move forward with that project right now this summer. Like I said, there's a lot of reasons as to why not, and we're going to do that project. We want to make sure, one, we do it right and have the time to put forth towards it that's really needed for that project. That project, you know, we don't, we don't know everything that might happen with the project, which might include parts of the track too. There is going to be some mild upgrades to the track before then to get us through. I think I'll wait and let those guys, let these guys tell you a little bit about that as well. They know more about what those upgrades look like and what they are and why we're doing them more than I do. We will do some mild things to get us through, but in a nutshell, they tell us, we did have somebody come out, and I can't, I'm sorry, guys, I can't remember who it was that came out or from what company. They came out, but they did come out. They evaluated our whole football field. They told us that, they kind of gave us some ideas and things that we can do to make sure that it's safe for this upcoming year. The good news is we're in really good shape. We're in really good condition to have another year of football on that field. I'm sorry, let them guy, these guys talk about that in a minute. So the one, the things that we are moving forward with, the one that I'm really excited about is one, the Oakwood parking lot, which I believe is going to take most of the summer to do that project. And our gentleman here can talk a little bit about that project and what that's going to look like and what it's going to entail and all the next steps and all those kinds of things. We're really excited to get moving on, on that project. And the next project we're going to move forward with is the playground at Harvey Swanson. I've already had a chance to sit down and talk with Debbie Brower. I went over there before break. I toured the whole playground myself so I could kind of get an idea of what's going on over there and what needs to be done. She's got a committee in place, which I think some of you were on. Thank you for being part of that committee. And really excited about making some major upgrades to that facility too for, for our kids this summer. Jan is also going to come to you here in just a little bit, and she's going to talk about maybe moving some technology things a little bit forward, especially since we're not getting the football field this year, dealing with our communications system and upgrading that. I think Thomas might be part of that as well, talking to us about that communication system and maybe even doing that a year earlier than what we expected to do it because we're not, no longer doing the football field. I'll let Jan and Thomas talk to you more about, about that. So those are our big projects. You have all these other smaller things going on, but those are our big things. Jan, is, what, what am I missing? And I know what you've been in depth way more than I have, but what am I missing that to preview it before we get to our?
You did a good job. Just going to set the stage for what's coming, and Brian's going to talk about how we're going to approach the communication piece or with the board monthly updates and that type of thing. So kind of get everything kind of so all on the same page on how we're going to be approaching this project and in terms of projects and our views and what the board will be approving and that type of thing. So we've met a few times, Dan, thank you, Dan's just jumped right in. So he's a part of the committee now, a part of the team, so we're, I feel good. And then Thomas and I have been working for several weeks on this, the technology, Thomas. So we'll talk a lot about technology today. Thanks.
So should we turn it over? Maybe, maybe Brian, if you don't mind, just talking to us a little bit about, you know, where we're at, where we're going, next steps, and then I'm sure the board has some questions for us.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here and happy new year. This is exciting part now. We're starting to actually get into bond projects. It was the long campaign, work up rate for the districts, so congratulations first of all. So yeah, there's some, you know, being passed kind of late in the years, didn't have a big window for doing a lot of design and getting a lot of construction projects out for the summer of 22. So we took a hard look at what projects were most pressing and which ones did actually get, again, get bid. Jeff Phase to be talking in a second from the old cast, other construction managers. And then Jeff's insight as far as, you know, he's really got the pulse of what's going on out there in the world today, as, as you know, with COVID, it really goes up.
If anybody, yeah.
I had to talk about that too, because that has a lot to do with what we talked about, projects that we could get out there and actually get completed for 22, and Chris Dan had mentioned the turf was a, was a project that we, after we talked with the consultants and just didn't feel like we had adequate time to do it correctly. We don't want to rush things and do something, do something wrong, but. So I'll just go over the three projects that we've got slated to go first. First is the Oakwood parking lot, as we mentioned, civil engineers have been out to the site. We've ordered soil boring, have been taken on some various points in the parking lot to look at the areas that are failing. We know we've got some problems under there. We're trying to determine how much actual base removal we may need to do. And hopefully, not a lot, but you never can tell with these, these parking lots nowadays, but. So we have the engineer on there, we've got the topography, we've read it. Soil boring's again are ordered, so we're looking to get that designed schematically to Jeff and his crews, so we can do some best reading on it and make sure we're looking to go with the bond budget, and everything looks good, then we can blow up the bids in February timeframe. And that'll be a summer project that, again, Jeff will talk more on the construction end, but try to take up the entire summer to do. That's our first project we're working on. Second is the Swanson playground, as was mentioned, Debbie reached out and we've got a Wednesday afternoon as our first meeting, our kickoff meeting for that with the committee. We have a playground consultant on board as well, so we'll be basically brainstorming on what's the best approach for the playground. Could be one large structure again, or several smaller structures, and also there were some pieces kind of hanging around the back area. They're just kind of cloped there, so we're going to see what what Debbie would like to do with her crew as far as we had two, two areas of play, but with one area, that'll be some of the discussion we'll be having. So that'll be kicked off, and again, we're looking at a similar timeframe, like to get up for bids in February, March-ish, so we can get that work done over the summer and be ready for fall. So those are the two main projects for this summer of 22. The other project that we'll be in design for is the football field and the track. We'll be doing the design now and hopefully get that out to bids in the early fall time. Be one of the first out on the gate there to get on the street for, for summer of 23. Because being football, we want to get right away in the spring to get in there and get there ready for August, so the team can start practicing and play on the field. So that'll be summer of 23, not 22. There's a lot involved there. We're going to talk about colors and, and again, budget and track issues. We'll be doing some slight repairs to the track, there's some cracking that we need to address, get that ready for track season. And then in the spring, we can do some grooming. There's companies that come in with the turf and they groom the field, get things repaired if there's any tears. And our preliminary indication, it's in good shape. We can at least get one more year out of it. So we'll make sure we come in the spring with a company that will prepare the field ready for our, our football season for 22. Okay, so any questions on the design parts? I'm going to turn over to Jeff to talk about the construction part and some scheduling, but if there's any discussion or questions on the three projects.
So at the risk of going outside the framework of the three projects, is there any thought to, just given the ADA issues with the soccer field access and, you know, being able to provide the pathway and other amenities that are intended to, to support that access for anybody who needs it? Is that, there's, again, I don't, I don't want to go down a path of, what about this and what about that? It's just given the fact that that's a compliance issue, I guess it rises to the top for me. Do we have any thoughts on that?
One of our next steps after these projects is to basically map out the entire rest of the bond, create a master plan, so to speak.
Sure.
And that definitely is one of the hot topics on the, on the master plan as far as, we can get that in properly. Hopefully, we want to work that in with other, with other site-related projects, so it's not a standalone, because small project like that, if it's standalone, the crisis goes skyrocket even more so than what we see. So we want to, again, we want to do that smartly and make sure that we've got that package. Again, that's where Jeff and his staff come in with their expertise as far as helping the projects out, so we get, number one, and today we get enough looks at it because there's so much work and a lot of people out there. So we have to make sure that the packages are attractive to bidders, which would give them the best prices in the district.
Right.
So to answer your question, yes, that is one of our, our topics, our hot topics to do, but again, we want to make sure we package it correctly, so we, we, we don't, we get a good value on the, on the job.
Thank you.
So that's one of our other items on here is our next steps. We'll be meeting quickly in this, this winter, designing that so-called master plan, because the bond's actually in two series, so we have to work with financial folks as far as what projects can be in which summer and so forth, and which ones are, are hot. We know Swanson's the hot one and those projects there, so I already alerted Debbie, get ready. So we're doing some design here, because we want to make sure that Swanson's all ready to go by the time they leave for summer, so we get that all to begin in the fall, but. So if there's no design-related questions, I want to turn over to Jeff. He can talk about construction and scheduling and what the challenges he has nowadays as far as the.
I am, I am, you said design with the football, so is it planned and reconfiguring or color-wise?
Color, graphics, logos, striping as far as dairy markers. There's so much advanced since that field was built. So much in the technology that, and the graphics that are happening nowadays. We want to make sure that we, we, we know exactly what the industry wants to put down in that field.
Right, so it's not really changing the substructure.
No, 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 I, I'm sorry if I, I kind of misspoke, and it's all the graphics related, menzo, centerfield graphics, all that type of thing, so. There's so much out there that they can do nowadays, which are really very nice and attractive, so.
And there's probably some better options on foot, so to, with multiple companies and businesses, and to have your, your models.
Right.
There is, yeah. Years ago, when the turf came out, I remember it was very thin, pretty thin fiber. Now it's more like blades, long blades of grass, and you can hit various types out there. So that's where we have an athletic consultant that'll be working with us in the district to hold those types of specification, what's, what's the best idea for the, the district. Also look at your, your shock pad situation, if you don't suddenly hurt for injury, so that'll all be, be discussed over the winter time.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your information for taking the time to do that.
No problem. And get any questions that come up anytime within the van, and I'll be more than happy to, to address those. I'm going to turn over to Jeff for a second here.
Well, I also think back on Brian's company, and such a successful outcome. Talking reference to about the times that you guys did some great, very well organized, very professional, so obviously that's pretty fun, so congratulations. As far as timeframes, Brian's talking about with his first projects, to get those essentially done towards the end of February. So that means we'll be bidding with sometime in March, just depends on February, February, then you probably get to be, you know, the market for February. You know, it's roughly a two-week bid period, and we'll take probably a week between the time of final drawings, being able to get an issue out, and get on the street. So that's about three weeks, and we're done, giving that, it's, it's, that's not a typical project. We're only dealing with, you know, a couple of bid divisions here for this work. So it's pretty reminder, and as far as the typical package, if you're doing fair amount of construction work, maybe put in addition on it, so it might be 1250 or more bid divisions. Because you're getting a lot more quicker discipline. The site work, we're dealing with the site contractors and paving contractors are coming, it's two now. And the playground, obviously, for the most part, it's playground, we're just doing site changes. That won't be trouble, so hopefully put together. So in that timeframe, we will put together, after the bids, we'll put together a warm recommendation that we do our post-bid interviews with the ground ball bidders. Make sure we give them a list of the most qualified bidders to do the work, and then that is taken to the board for approval. And once the approval is, each, then we will break contracts between the school district and those contracted, Brian done that, so, then we'll, so. So then once those contracts go up, we start getting spills in or trails and things. The one good thing about this, even though it's kind of like Brian said, they're punch here, you know, the end of the bidding season, you know. 10 years ago, this used to be early, it's beginning, so. Now we're finding we don't get things out on call from private inside, where we're trying to get enough bidders, because everybody's got work to do, and certainly pick and choose what they want to do, so. You might, it will hit the street when you have the long, it's been a little opportunity to buy a bid, to do those calls. But this one, especially dealing with site work, there's not a lot of lead material items or anything, and prep that's on foods, it's going to take a long time. Again, the concrete weapon base has been dating up to six months, but it's kind of hard to schedule it in, but this project doesn't give, so we can check there. And I think there's a sufficient number of site contractors around this area, paving contractors, which should give pretty good response. And he's right, especially the parking lot, as extensive as the market is there, it's probably going to take the better part of the summer. But our goal is to get things turned over in the districts, so they have at least a couple of weeks to kind of get it activated before the school reasons, so. Try to do things down later than, for, 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 for. Any questions? Yes.
Realizing if you went too far in the weeds, I probably wouldn't understand what you were saying, but in summary, with the biggest issue with the parking lot, you know, but I'm sure all of us have a sensitivity to it. If something was done once, and this is not a disparagement toward anybody who did the work or planned the work or authorized the work or anything, but if it failed, right? All of it is, parking lot structure failed. So with that, assuming we, we know the reasons for that failure too, and those are, are being addressed in a fashion where the, and one of the reasons I'm asking this is that the local grocery store, someone asked me, that's where the best information has, a lot of the pocket nine at the local grocery store. But so someone asked, and, or I will ask, you know, making sure that the, the basis for that failure is now properly addressed, and I assure the person I was speaking to, that we have the best team on the job, they understand, they understand it, and the question's been very kind, it just matters, you know, getting to it. And so I'm raising that because I have all the confidence that one can have that it will be fixed properly this time, but it's definitely a sensitivity that our certain members of our community have, especially those who frequent that, that school, and see it all the time. So with that said, I guess my, my question is, so I have an understanding, what was the basis for the failure?
Well, I think that's to be determined.
Okay, when you get into it, yeah.
You know, Brian will do some exploratory, so, you know, that's all worries and things like that.
Yeah, that, that's part of the reason that we ordered the soil boring, sure, the bad areas, so we can see what happens underneath. So if you're someone who really like moisture content or something of that nature, that causes that base to fail. Usually when you have the, I think we call it alligatoring, the top of the surface just starts with lines and squares. Usually that's a sign that something's going on underneath, because the asphalt is actually a very thin product compared to concrete. So when we see that type of alligatoring failure, that means there's some base problems, so that's why we want to take a soil boring right down there and see if we've got high water table in some areas or something of that nature that we would have to address in the design, hopefully, because that's, that's.
That's one of the problems with site work. It's not like you're going to resist rebuilding, being able to dilate things and pull along the ceilings, things like that. Site work, you really have to, even by doing the sort of, you can, you're trying to do it in areas where you think that the damage occurred better, if you're trying to give it the best, or feed that. But that's, you know, you might go, you might be away from that, it may be good when you're doing soil boring, you're putting a bit, you're talking something. Like, get it down, but you didn't really do it, when you're actually doing the work. We'll probably build in, we typically build in in the proposal form, the unit cost, remove and suitable soil, replace with, the engineered sand, the past sand. So that, you know, going in, you have a unit cost, you get an area, a pocket of course oil, there can also be material testing companies involved in this work, independent, or contractors that you will coordinate and, and, it quite simply, most except when you're firing the new starting. But they will with dilation conditions, they will, they have to remove some material, they will, they have to design what's established for that, and we already have the unit costs, and you know to have the buy, how much that cost is going to be. Just try to think ahead as much as you can, but as I'm saying, we're actually still in trouble, we got, there's always a surprise. Hopefully, we can be prepared for that.
Sure. I think that answered in mine. I think mine was left to, trust me when I tell you we've got all of the reasons involved, and get it fixed. I think that was my, there you go, okay.
As Jeff mentioned, the testing engineer that will be on site will be working for the district directly, work made, and work for Jeff, and work for the contractor.
Sure, yeah.
We scrape off the old top asphalt, which usually will be starting to find out. They do, they do an activity called proof rolling. We bring a large truck in, and they just roll over the base after the surface is removed. And they, basically, it's a visual, we watch and see, it's called pumping, whether the base is going to start, like you're on a mattress, so to speak. Then we know, okay, we got a problem here, but the testing agency will, will be there, and that's the guy who will direct the, okay, let's, let's scrape off a couple of feet of this, let's see what we got. So we'll have those experts, those geotechnical experts will be on site during the base preparation, and that will, that will tell us where we have our real problem areas, we scrape off the asphalt.
Thank you.
If we can find some high moisture areas, we may have to build in some, it's not just a matter of moving soil. Those are things we will have to control.
Civil engineers looking at that now with the topography to make sure that we get that water to the catch base, and so it doesn't sit on the surface. That's the other issue that the engineers are looking at, to make sure that all the rainwater and stormwater gets to the, those outlets as fast as possible, so they don't sit, have a chance to breathe, that type of deal. That will also show in the light of your parking lot, so between the design engineer and then the testing engineer on site as much as we can do to actually make sure we've got the proper base thickness and the design and the grade, the, the water is accessible.
We have the bus traffic there too, I'm sure.
We do have buses, yeah.
So that's another area where designers will control it, more than likely, you'll end up with thicker asphalt, maybe even more storm base, mattering with bus traffickers, which obviously, maybe some heavy traffic in the area. So, and then, you separate that, you have five, six inches of asphalt in that noise, and then the next storm base is just, parking area, the thing, three, four inches of asphalt, and maybe eight inches of stone. No, I'm choosing some.
That's good, thank you.
How's the curving there, Ian? Kind of old when you drive in, got the pond on this side, and then all it's wetland here. Yank it out, what are you going to do, curving on both sides and keep it, or if they're going to get disturbed, then how are you going to, it's a pause on.
That's a great question, because demolition process, we have to take into account what we think will survive demolition process or not, whether that curb goes out, we do want to go in, so. That's something that the civil engineer will be driven.
Well, it doesn't make sense, because if it's all loose, going to get spied on, assume it's on a swamp, you don't really stop in terms of what you will all side or really build it up and, and.
That's part of the design process, the engineers will get the soil boring back. Again, a lot of it has to do with how much they feel has to come out, what it, if it's saved, it's not worth to try and save something, take it all out and start over again.
He's the engineer.
Spalding Decker is the civil engineer.
One of the other items, we don't have a lot, so we'll make sure that we reach out to as many local contractors as possible. So we've got a fairly substantial database of contractors, it's a difficult project, we have, we have a dozen to two thousand different bids, or past acts that we reach out to. But we want to make sure we book with some people in the area, so we put together those, but if you have people that aren't on those, we want to make sure we're notifying them. Make sure they're familiar with the project, where everybody isn't all paid, it's going to be advertised on the state website. The private players can just reach out. Again, there's not many contractors involved with this tonight, we want to start that process, so.
That's wonderful, thank you for that. Nice.
The last thing is that we want to start doing a monthly update to the board, so now that we started our project, we have a monthly update. Some months may be not much to talk about, but we'll be giving you an update on what projects are in design, where they are, what projects, we need a bidding procedure, or after the bids are awarded, and where the projects are as far as starting construction. So Jeff and I will be composing that every month and getting it to you, so we'll keep you updated all the way from now for next three, four years.
Like I told, I know, Chris Ice, Chris Ice will be a project manager, he'll be inside, so, I've been cheering, saving the project, and back in Ohio, we're doing, bringing in project. I was thinking about a project, so unfortunately, it's kind of gated almost a hundred percent of the time just for that job. Pretty much a little bit from now, so we'll start to do. So then, you have to deal with it.
So Manhattan Island in the winter.
In the winter.
Poor guy.
Oh my gosh. This all looks so easy to them to do that.
Yes.
Very good. Does anybody have any other questions for our guests before we? Thank you very much. We always appreciate your time and insights. We always appreciate your time and insights.
All right. So with that, it looks like we, if it's okay with you, Jen, can we move on to technology?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great, thank you.
So what we, Thomas and I and Earl had worked on this for several weeks, December sixth. Thomas and I tweeted a tab recently in light of Jackson traveling in the need for a potential better communication system. And this is a time system that the board voted that we want for our PM. We were talking last week and Thomas said, well, newer phone systems are very sophisticated. And you might be able to do kind of an all in one, get that communication emergency system along with the new phone system that we were going to do anyway. There was really no reason we were going, well, the only reason we were going to wait to 2024 is because of summer 2020. It's going to be, we have to ground you with the custom technology. So we pushed it to 2024, but there was really no reason we need it in 2022. It's not like we don't need it now. And Thomas is working with a consultant. It looks like it's feasible to do the new phone system this summer. So we wanted to just, we moved that up in the project timeline that Thomas is going to be going through. And next month then, we would like to, it looks like we're going to do some more research. But it looks like we'll be asking the board to approve to go out to bid for this, the new phone system for the summer, this summer. That's where I have that one, that change. But then Thomas has done a great job with, we kind of structured this to make sense and how we're going to fund these projects and what projects and everything, so Thomas.
Hey Jen, good evening, everybody. And thanks for giving me the time to kind of talk about our technology plan that we've been working on for a couple of months.
Yeah.
This last in a couple of months. And let me see here. Yeah, with that phone system, if you guys do have questions or concerns about integrating that into a new phone system, I can answer those as well. First off, I just want to say that this document is kind of fluid. It's going to change over the years. Prices are going to potentially move from category or funding source. And projects could be added and potentially removed. So we just wanted to show what our plan was for the next eight years with all the funding sources that are going to be available to us, including the bond. So first thing I want to talk about, just this document in general, so you understand what I'm going through each of these projects. So at the top here, we have our funding sources. Two federal grant funding sources, the Emergency Connectivity Fund, E-Rate. The bond broken into the the two categories, instructional technology and remodeling. The Bel Airn proceeds and of course, general funds. So obviously, we want to use these funding sources as best as we can to stay away from the general fund. And I think we'll definitely be able to do it. I mean, at this point. And then if you come over to the side here, you can see that we broke this up into series one. Just go down here, series two. And that's just based on when the instructional technology funds are going to be available to us. So it's a timeframe thing. So from 2021 to 2025. And under that, instructional technology will have 1.2 million available to us to spend. And then going into series two, the additional 1.2 million will become available. And we'll be spending that during that timeframe. Does that kind of make sense, the layout? So, starting, we've already actually started a lot of this. And going into next year, the first thing that we're going to be doing is replacing all student and staff devices. Mobile devices, I should say, completely. We're going to be utilizing the Emergency Connectivity Fund, which is a new fund that just became available in 2021. We worked on that since January. And there's two windows over there. We've already been approved for the first window. So the ones that are not highlighted here, we've already, we actually already have those devices on site. So some of the students actually have those devices in their hands already. And we're going to be working on replacing all of the teacher laptops that are throughout the district, as well as some of the staff members that are throughout the districts, like pair of pros and specialized department. So that's a fund that we we received from, you know, this federal grant that came about in 2021 due to the pandemic. Which is great. And these highlighted areas we have applied for, but it's pending approval at this point. We have high hopes that it's going to go through. There's really no reason why it shouldn't go through. But we're still waiting on that. And hopefully, it does go through so we can finish replacing all the iPads in the district. So the pre-pendent mirrors to the second grade students and then finishing up the rest of the grade levels for Chromebooks, yes.
What happens to all the old devices?
Good question. So our plan is to have students with like the brand new, best of the best devices in the district. And just mainly because they typically are still learning the devices, right? So it's better for them to have devices that don't have any issues. Whereas if we potentially give it to a different staff member, or it's just their device and potentially they take a little bit better care of it. So the whole, the whole idea is to replace student devices in with the the newest version of old devices and the best conditioned devices from the students to provide those to teachers. So really, the plan is, I think, let me see if I can scroll down here and jump ahead a little bit.
Sorry, if it's, if you're addressing it later, I didn't need to interrupt.
No, that's okay. But that that is a good question. Our plan is to provide devices to the teachers. So as we're replacing student devices that still have some good use in it, a few years of good use in them, to provide those to teachers.
For teachers will have more than one device. They have a district provided laptop and then.
Yeah. So by 2023, our plan is to have, for every teacher to have a Windows device that controls their classroom, a Chromebook that they can have, as well as an iPad. So they'll have three devices per classroom throughout the whole district.
Is there ever an opportunity for some of our community members that are not in a position to to really have devices at home? And I I know that they do by virtue of the student bringing their Chromebook home or something. But is there ever an opportunity, and again, if I'm wailing the whole.
No, 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 you're fine.
To allow for maybe members, parents, who, you know, it would be helpful to them to have a device in their home. Is that something down the road that we can?
Now that we're getting all these devices, I would say, prob, most likely. We've talked about this, I think we talk about it every year when we have these devices. A lot of times, just due to the amount of money it costs to replace these devices, we try to extend the life of them as long as.
Right, understood, yeah.
We do all our own onsite repairs. But by the time that we're replacing these devices.
They don't have any life.
With the iOS, you know, the operating systems are completely spent.
Sure.
Do we really want to provide a device to somebody who's just going to have problems?
Right, understood.
So, but now that we're getting all these devices, I mean, you know, we're talking, you know, over 2,000 different devices that we're going to be replacing as students. We have under 250 staff members. We're going to have a lot of devices that potentially are just going to be sitting there, so.
That's where my mind is to, yeah. Yeah, I know it's adding another, you know, programming and everything that would go into that. I'm not like, well, let's just do this. I'm really not. I'm just thinking about, you know, our community and and the challenges that I would personally have. If I didn't have, you know, something available to me that, so.
I would say, yeah, no problem. I would say that we do need to have a, we then, especially me and Jen need to talk about that probably in 2023, 2024.
Sure.
When we get all those devices back. Because that's going to be kind of a long process.
Yeah.
We're phasing that in right now, just because we can kind of have the time, like everyone's satisfied right now. But, you know, so we have the time to kind of phase that in.
That's good. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, thanks for the question. So that's one of the main projects that we'll be doing this summer. We are, we're already starting it. Infrastructure wise, network infrastructure wise, which will be like our E-Rate funded projects. We're going to be upgrading our firewalls, our main one in our email firewall. And we'll be bringing in new fiber cabling for some of the areas where it's outdated. So that'll increase the bandwidth in some of those areas. We're going to bring in some more access points with all of these devices that are new, that we haven't had really in the past to this extent. There's some areas that could use additional access points. We want to bring those and to satisfy those areas. And then, of course, we talked about the the phone system and integrating that emergency communication platform. Is there any questions about that system and moving that into this year? Are any concerns? I, it's going to be, I'm pretty excited about this. Whenever I see, you know, systems like this that work so good, I'm excited about it because it's, you know, you don't know it exists. And then you start talking about it. It's like, this is going to be, this is going to be nice. You know, the idea of being able to communicate district wise, district wide and to our first responders within, you know, potentially under 20 seconds is is nice. That makes you feel a lot more comfortable in your situation.
Yeah.
So that's what we're looking into. We'll definitely have more discussions about this, obviously, in the long run. But that's where we're moving, that's what we wanted to do before. Let's say that's already a project that. Another big one this summer, starting this year as well, is we have. A lot of our money is going to go into classroom displays, replacing those. Right now, we have a lot of outdated projectors that are struggling. And that's just one of our topics of, we know we have to replace it. We're just kind of waiting for the funds. Obviously, they're here now, so we, we don't, we're taking it very serious on how we spend all this money, obviously. But this one in particular, because, you know, it's the teachers that are going to be using this. I've been involved with the district over, you know, several years. And I've seen, you know, some decisions aren't always, you know, the best. And we really want to try as hard as we can to make that that decision. So what we're going to do is, or at least the plan right now, is to establish a committee. And then this is the kind of timeline of the committee that I have so far. None of this is solid, I should say, none of it, but most of it's not solid right now. But the whole idea is, you know, we want to get a couple of teachers from each building. And I've discussed this with the principals on, you know, we really want to have teachers that do a good job or would do a good job of representing their whole building when it comes to these decisions. Once we get this group together, we're going to be meeting about four to five times, starting in February and going into probably next year, January. We also want the committee to attend the McCall Conference this March. Because that's just a great conference to go to for these types of things. Because all of the vendors from all around the area bring in their latest, greatest technology. And you really can get some hands on and get your concerns answered and questions answered. So we just think that that's going to be a a big portion of this committee to really show the teachers, yep.
Is it on the committee agenda or somewhere in the list of things to address the the need for, on, when students, hopefully, we're moving out of these phases, right? Out of the need, but given our experience over two years of needing, needing to have the ability for online and having projectors and realizing now, I have no idea what I'm talking about. But some sort of system, a projector that, you know, allows the teacher to be live for those students who are physically present, along with feeling comfortable teaching those who may need or have to be, whatever the reasons, at home, even those who are just homesick with strep throat. You know, it's possible that something like that could be helpful across the board, regardless of the life we've been living.
I know, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
I know what you're getting at.
Right.
You know, that that's not a huge struggle, right?
Yeah.
You know, these teachers get out of class and they're like, well, I don't want, how can you expect me to teach these students? And this student, that student. It has been a problem. You know, some teachers have been like, I don't care so much. Some teachers have been like, absolutely not, sure. So it is going to be a topic that I I'm positive is going to be discussed amongst the committee of the teachers. It's something that we are going to look into. Whether this is something in particular that we're going to, is going to be able to be integrated. You know what I'm saying? It might have to be some, an additional purchase, I don't know. It would be nice if if there was an all in one deal where it's like, okay, we can just put this in, not only presents, and not only has interactivity within the classroom, but it also has potentially cameras, microphones that allow that teacher to not even have to worry about it. I know, what was the meeting that we had, the, what was the event that we had outside?
Oh, I remember.
I stand with alumni, so you guys, a couple of you probably have released that system. Technologies because of the pandemic is in that area going, or has come a long way. And that's almost a system that you can just kind of sit there and it just does it. And the teacher doesn't have to worry about it as long as you're on.
I guess, I just, you know, again, interrupting a lot here, but I I raise it because I see this as an opportunity. If it's going to be addressed, it seems it's now.
Okay.
You know, with this influx of funds and with the need that's presented itself, that's very clearly presented itself for, you know, over two years now. Coming up on two years, rather. It's, I I highlight it as something that it seems to me that now is the time to really get in the weeds on what's possible, that's affordable, but will the teach, but will work in a preferential format for the teachers? Because we obviously want to give respect to, you know, what would work for them and not just impose something.
Sure.
Because then we'll just be right back to where we are now with it, you know, a a system that's not workable for them to accommodate everybody that needs to be accommodated. So that's that's all.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. I'm going to highlight it as well, going into into these meetings, going into this, you know, establishing this committee. I would say if if it's possible and and feasible, I should say, then yeah, absolutely. That needs to be a topic that we're we're discussing.
I think along with that needs to, there needs to be clear expectations for the teachers to be able to, like we said, some teachers might think, okay, with this new system, what am I going to be expected to do on a daily basis? Am I supposed to be using this every day? When I get that one brought up, or thrown at home one day? Like, good point. I expect it to be straight, really good.
And then, kind of piggybacking on that, I wonder about the instructional design component to it, right? So then, kind of speaking towards Carly's area, merging attack instructional design and making sure it's timely and for appropriate settings. So it's kind of an intersection of the three that I think we're looking at down the road.
Okay.
Just being able to, I think it's just not limiting ourselves and allowing for there to be opportunity, if, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I I get you completely. I I feel like I'm on the same page. I'm just going to kind of confirm that, if that's okay with you guys. For me, like what Jen was saying, it gets sticky, right? But I don't really care too much about that, Jen, more than I do. What I'm concerned about is, I don't want to get in a situation where we're discussing down the line that, oh, we want to do this now. And now all of a sudden, we have to buy something new.
Right.
Like, can we satisfy this now and talk later?
Yeah.
You know, right? So is that, am I on the same page as what you guys are kind of talking about?
That's where I see the opportunity is. I don't want to make purchases without, you know, and and I'm not suggesting anybody would. That's not what my point is.
Right.
My my highlight is ensuring that all considerations are, to the extent we can at all anticipate them, which we can, given our experience, that we take those, that awareness into consideration, identifying the proper equipment, identifying the needs, going to the expos, looking for things that the teachers themselves like.
Yeah.
That they feel comfortable with, so that it's respecting the point from which they're coming. And we're not just saying, here's a bunch of new equipment and technology and you must use it. That would not be, at least my intent, I don't think anybody else's intent either. It would be a team effort, but toward meeting that goal with an understanding of meeting that goal within defined expectations, as Hillary said, and working with Carly for the educational curriculum components and how that all weaves in way bigger than what I know you're intending to present on. But I guess my my point and everybody else is summed up just by saying, our money needs to work for us in addressing all the awarenesses that we sadly have in light of the last two years.
Right.
And if we're going to spend a dollar, then that dollar best address what we already know, our needs are. That's pretty much it.
I agree. And I'll be sure that we make that a huge topic in that. If it's out there, then we need to introduce it, you know, as an option.
Sure.
To say the least.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. It's, there's always something that you don't think about.
You haven't thought about it, for sure. We're just raising it again.
Yeah, not not in this fashion. Don't even know if they're going to accept, no. Don't even know if they're gonna accept, no. But so, thank you for that question. So yeah, the McCall Conference is is gonna be, I think, essential for them to see what is even out there. It changes every year. It's a good location to open your mind to to the different opportunities that are out there and different devices. We also want to, we're gonna wanna get it down to like our top options. And then once we have those top options, we want to bring in vendors with, you know, what do you have? Bring in what you have. Let's play around with it, ask the questions, get our concerns answered. And hopefully make a decision of what we wanna pilot. So the next thing would be to pilot two classrooms per building with whatever the the teachers decide or whenever we end up deciding. So that'll be going on in the fall. That's the plan. We'll discuss it again in December, you know, pros, cons, and hopefully make a final decision. If we can't make a final decision because certain things have to be worked out, we'll extend over into January and and at that point, we will have to be making a final decision. You can expect that this committee will be coming back to the board to discuss what our decision is and what we think is gonna be best for the district. I'll also have estimations and timelines available too, so we know that this is gonna work for that coming summer into the next year because the plan will be to hopefully get approval from the board to go out for an RFP and then bring in whoever we decide throughout that process to actually do the project, so it's ready to go twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Any questions about?
I just wanted to say, I'm very impressed with this presentation. I feel like, I I mean, believe it or not, there is a direction that you've setting. I really do like that you you are getting the input of teachers because I think it gets buy-in. You know, and 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 how important this is very, I'm very impressed with this. I feel I have a sense of the direction, like going at least to your front, knowing that it's obviously fluid, but I appreciate the time you and Jan put in.
It's definitely been a team effort, you know. Every, everybody said in this, in developing this really needed to be, you know, it's it's I I'm glad to hear that it it makes sense and that that you guys are getting some information, good information out of it. So yeah, it's definitely been a team effort and I appreciate that. So I'm just gonna kind of jump through these years of different projects. So twenty twenty-three is when we're gonna be providing those teachers with the Chromebooks that we'll have at that point. As we discussed, we'll be installing displays, whatever that ends up being in the classroom. The plan is to have it in the classroom before the start of the year twenty twenty-three. iPads as well. So we kind of already discussed this quite a bit. That'll be twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Going into the next year, we'll be bringing in external security cameras. We have a lot of security cameras throughout the district, not a lot of external ones. So we can't really see too much of outside of the building. So we're gonna be bringing those in.
Let me just jump in.
Sure.
That one is one that definitely can be moved. That's definitely on the, on the, the thinking is that could move way off.
So are we thinking maybe twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
The safety committee is going to be formed here soon and Premier is giving us the report soon. So that's definitely one that may.
Okay. Who, that's a big year. But if that's what has to happen, that's what has to happen.
Right.
So my only concern would be getting it open, but. Hey, we we've done more, so I'm not too worried about it. We'll figure it out. But yeah, like I said, fluid document, this stuff is gonna be. We're also, we also have a different security system throughout the district that was like the older style and it's still running separately from the new. It was always the intention to integrate those for a lot of reasons. It never happened just due to funds. So this is a great, integrate that system to the same thing. We're gonna be doing that that year. The batteries that we have throughout the district that keep all of our closets on during power outages that are continuously happening, you know what I'm about? As you guys know, those will be end of life, so we'll be replacing those that here as well. We have a server that caches internet websites that frequently are accessed throughout the district. And that provides faster access as well, kind of creates a lower bandwidth footprint. That'll be end of life and we'll be replacing that as well. Those two, the UPS batteries and caching server, E rate projects, so we get generally about seventy percent reimbursement for it. So we always try to take advantage of those projects. Any questions about series one? Anything that you wanna include from series one, Jan? Okay, so jumping. Three minutes. Good. The hard part stuff is done, so I'm good. So, series, series two. Basically, this is when the funds for the second series become available. We'll stay volume license for Microsoft, so we can get Windows twelve, Windows thirteen, whatever that ends up being at that timeout pushed out to the computers. We'll update the document cameras to iPads like we did all and all of the other buildings at the high school. All of the office desktops will be upgraded and the labs for the middle school and high school will all be updated that year. By twenty twenty-six, we'll need to completely replace our wireless infrastructure. And that'll put us in a situation we'll be ready for ten to fifteen years after that. And we've gotten about that off of the last system, so. But what will be due for that? And then this is really where our refresh starts. So we'll be refreshing the Chromebooks. And then we'll be giving the newest, best version of the student Chromebooks to the teachers. And then the following year, we'll be refreshing the iPads and giving the best newest iPads of the students to the teachers. And then we'll also be replacing the STEM labs and the STEM laptop parts at the high school, because those will be end of life. Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're keeping track of available funds, the total budget as this sits right now. If so, if any changes, the actuals come in. These are formulas down there, so we're gonna constantly be monitoring the budget and what we're spending and because we do have several different funds here and we have to stay within our bond guidelines. So this is going to be something that Thomas and I will be using to track the the projects. Right now, we're not over spent anywhere. So that's good. And right now, we have nothing coming out of general fund, which is the goal as well.
And then we're gonna spend this two hundred thousand dollars on candy for the teachers.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Now that's a little extra, yeah.
Which will probably be smart.
Yeah.
Any questions or concerns about how we're going about this or our direction? Anything that we you think we should be adding to this, highlighting this?
Well, the only thing I might just touch on is, when you're talking about giving like the older devices, the best ones to the teachers, my only concern with that would be if that's their only, let's say, iPad and they have the, you know, model that is not as new and they're teaching the kids, the gap that's going to be between those two devices.
Great question. There are Chromebooks and there are iPads. So the good news is, is it doesn't matter really what iPad you have, as long as it supports the newest iOS, then that'd be good. So it's all gonna look the same, same thing with the Chromebooks, as long as we have and based on the the history of these devices. We still have G fours out there. I know that doesn't mean anything to you guys, but these are what we originally got for Brandon Fletcher Intermedia. It was the first wave of them. We still have them in kids' hands and they're still working without any problem. And that's a long time that that we've had those devices. But you know, we keep them up and we fix them and all that. But that's what makes Chromebooks and iOS so great for education. It is, it doesn't really matter what device you have, that as long as it can support the OS, it's gonna do the same as anything that's actually using it. Depending on, you know, the speed requirements, a pretty low capacity operating system, so. You can get a lot of life out of other devices. Any questions?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I I guess my concern would be if you're demonstrating for them and your look, yours.
Looks different.
And it goes about the operations different, that can be confusing for.
Well, that could be, it could be a potential issue with the amount of years we've had, got a lot of these devices before Google or Apple stopped supporting the operating systems for certain reason. And they do. We start saying, you can't use this, you can't use this. You run into problems. We could see those issues depending, but because we have such a wide range of different versions from our students, the newest version for most students. I don't see any, any reason why we would have problems before the next refresh.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Okay.
They should all look the same, as long as those OSs come down. And I believe they will, refreshing this web with the past history.
Thank you so much, Thomas.
I have one, one last question. I'm sorry, real quick.
Yeah.
What, how frequently will we receive updates on this? I mean, I don't know that it would be a monthly kind of thing at all, but just when you expect our next update?
My my thought actually was like monthly.
Is it monthly?
Really quick, along with the, you know, the architects monthly, just just real quick. If there seems to be too much, we certainly.
No, no.
Such a, we just really want to be transparent with the projects and keep it on the radar and.
Yeah, no, I love monthly. I just.
Okay, that's our plan. That's what we talked about.
All right, great, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
I can easily move that to next month, the bus replacement schedule.
Right, I didn't know how long it may be.
I can just say, you know, quickly that we're not planning on purchasing any buses this year. The the bus replacement schedule is going to start in the summer of twenty twenty-three, so I certainly could do that next month.
Okay, so you don't need anything of us to help you?
I don't need, we were just gonna, it was part of the whole bond. We have bond money for that, but I'll do that.
Okay, as long as you have what you need.
Yeah, I I don't need a thing. It's just letting you know, kind of like this, only much less, what the plan is.
Got it. No, thank you for sharing the timeframe, though. That gives us a framework. So thank you. Apologize for running out of time on that.
No, this is good.
All right, oh, so with that, we're adjourning our work session. And given the time, really good conversation. Thank you, everybody. Given the time, we're gonna roll, once Maria tells me so, we're gonna roll right into our regular board meeting. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to call our regular meeting of the Brandon Board of Education to order. It is six thirty-five. My apologies for being a couple of minutes late. With that, may I have a roll call? Diane Salter.
Here.
Melissa Clark here. Emily Smith Colaga here.
Rebecca Haynes here.
Jeff Sokey.
Here.
Hillary Sikowski.
Yeah.
Dan Stevens.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Carly Stone.
Yeah.
Diane Zedan.
Here.
Lisa Kellerman.
Here.
Thank you. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm excited that next on our agenda is our BHS student report and we have, I believe, Piper and Emma who are joining us.
Yep. Okay, so first off, we're just the Brandon High School Student Council and we're just gonna talk to you about a few things that are going on in the school right now. So the first thing we're gonna talk to you about is our charity week. Our charity week was the second week in December. Our goal was to raise three thousand dollars for the Oakland County Charity, Oakland County Foster Closet. We made a grand total of four thousand dollars, or four thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-three cents. But during our charity week, we decided to take the profits from our district-wide PJ day and donate that to our friends at Oxford High School. We ended up donating two thousand and six dollars to OHS and two thousand three hundred eight dollars, sixty-three cents to Oakland County Foster Closet. Then up next for our council, we are going to be attending regionals this Wednesday and then states will be in March. So for regionals, we're gonna travel to Frankenmuth and for states, we're gonna go to Grand Rapids. And these, the regionals and states just has leader, like, has activities that help us build our leadership skills in our community as a whole. And the regionals and states are run by MASC, MHS, which is the Michigan Wide Organization for State Council. Next up is our service project. Our service project was very successful this year. We hand-delivered seventy-six care bags to assisted living homes in the area and twenty bags from New Parents to Hillside Bible Church. If you guys have any questions, you can feel free to ask. Not much has happened since the last time in we presented, because it's just kind of been wrapping things up, so.
Well, let me just say, all of us applaud your efforts in your charity meeting. You know, fundraising and your choices and who is benefiting from your efforts are stellar. Really good job to everyone involved with that. That's fantastic to embrace that much and exceeded your goal by so much.
Thank you.
That's fantastic. Also, we each have these beautiful, thank you notes. Thanks for helping us grow with these beautiful, what a cute idea, with these wonderful plants and a little card, which my children will not see. I'm gonna tuck that in my own wallet for for me to enjoy, but no, just kidding. But thank you so much for thinking of us and for this gesture. We really appreciate it and we appreciate you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for joining us always. We love the reports.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome. Have a good night, guys. Thank you so much. All right, now moving on to the acting superintendent's report. Dan?
As you can see, Piper was removing herself from practice just for a few minutes. I think she was on her cell phone. There, so it really struggled trying to, because we just had Christmas break, so there wasn't a lot going on. So I told them to talk about what might be, what might be coming on. Yes, they did. Yes, they did. I'm gonna leave this really short and 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 simple today. I know that we got a lot to approve on our agenda for today, but the first thing I just wanna say is thank you to all of you. As we know, this is superintendent appreciation one. And oftentimes, people just don't know what goes into what you guys do. And I I can't say from my standpoint as a, as a principal and as an acting superintendent, the the things that you have meant to to this district and this community, the things that you guys do on a daily basis. A lot of our community sees you here on one Monday a month. But I'm talking to our, our, our staff is talking to our communities, talking to you almost daily. And the things that you guys bring to us, your expertise is just amazing. So on behalf of the whole Brandon school district, I just wanna say thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you guys do. It's a very hard job. And it is not appreciated enough. So our, I guess I can leave these over here. Let's see, one, hand them out right now, leave them here. Maybe you can get them on the way out. But our, our, many of our schools or clubs are different areas within the Brandon School District all contributed to what you see over here. So please, before you go tonight, make sure that you take those with you. Once again, thank you for all you do.
Very much.
Thank you.
To everyone that participated in that gesture.
One more, I just always wanna give an update to on COVID. I know we're always interested in that, especially with the new strains of COVID that are going on. Right now, in the Brandon School District, we are seeing a slight increase of COVID cases. We do, it is on our, it is on our website, but we do have right now an increase, mostly at the middle school and the high school levels. It's not like an exorbitant numbers, but it is, but it is, it is an increase. The thing that we're excited about is this, is our, the test to stay program, which Carly has been working on so diligently even before Christmas break. That was gonna go into effect last week. We were all set for it the day we returned and our nurse came down with COVID last Sunday night. Because of the the shortages in the nursing industry, we we struggled to find somebody to help us out this week, but we do have somebody now that will be up back up and running tomorrow. So for all the students that are currently quarantined, almost all of them qualify for this test to stay program. So we're hoping that tomorrow morning, that we see a lot of these kids come into the ITech Center, get tested, we can send them right to school. So we're hoping that tomorrow morning, that we see a lot of these kids come into the ITech Center, get tested, we can send them right to school. Um, so we're, we are excited about that, even though our numbers are up, our quarantine numbers are gonna probably be, I'm gonna guess, one more tomorrow, way down. So, so that's fantastic. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. Um, it comes to COVID, we've had an easy, uh, time back from break. Um, really, really, our principals, I talked to every one of them today, they're all doing fantastic, they report, uh, things are running really smoothly and, um, and no issues going on right now, not currently, and I, so, um, I'll leave it at that. Any questions or anything about anything?
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Do you want Diane to introduce the new teachers now?
Yes, is that, is that?
They are action items at the end.
Awesome. Yeah, let's get them, because especially if they're on and, and, and here and waiting for us. Um, we are really excited, as you guys know, the state of Michigan has, um, has really stepped up to the plate um, when it comes to our so, our students' social emotional health. And we, um, especially in this time of looking for employees, are so lucky uh, for the people that we were able to find to fill some of these positions, I'm gonna turn it over to Diane, um, who will give us a little bit more information.
Thank you. Why don't we start with Janine? So Janine Martin is a guy, a new employee, uh, she'll be placed at, uh, Brandon Middle School, and she is a school counselor, and she's gonna be working with our my at-risk mental health supports and supporting students and the whole team there, um, that, that's me, and we still work in Holly, so. Um, she comes to us at Bus School Experience and, um, went to Oakland and.
Um, sure, um, I, I know that I got a pleasure of meeting with, um, Mr. Stevens over Christmas break, what was my Christmas break, they weren't quite there yet, but we got to meet over video and talk a little bit about my past, I grew up in the UP and I came downstate to be with my husband, and I have two kids, two grandkids, and, um, yes, you stole me from Holly, but I'm more excited to be here and be a Black Rock, so. I'm looking forward to working with the middle schoolers again, I used to work in the middle school before, and then I went to our high school, I'm really excited to be back in the middle school and really be part of this initiative to work on the mental health for your students, so, thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
I had to text her to ask her.
It's very.
So, Sarah Mash, um, is gonna be our new, uh, research room teacher at our high school, after we, we have a bus teacher, and we resigned, so, um, Sarah comes to us from experience, uh, many years of experience in Alabama, and we're glad she's coming back home.
Yeah.
We're always glad that we're gonna be back in Michigan.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Sarah, um, you can call me Mash, I am not married, so it gets confusing, and when the kids say Mrs. Mash, I think they're talking about my mom, and then they think that's fun, so. Um, I have spent my realm in middle school, I'm excited to step up to high school. Actually, this morning, when I thought I was coming to work, I said, wow, I haven't been in middle high school since two thousand and four. And then I got a text, JK, you don't have to go to high school today, I was like, oh, okay, cool, this is a great first day to work, so. I'm excited to have my first day officially tomorrow, and yeah, it should be exciting. Any questions?
Wonderful. Okay, cool. Welcome back. Thank you.
Anything else, Diane?
No, that's all I have today.
Thank you so much.
Hopefully you'll be hiring more. Keep it up, everyone.
There you go, and Carly, thank you for your help in, well, in every way, but I'm specifically speaking to the, jumping on the team for the test to stay program, and we really appreciate it's new, and you're sure your issue identifying left and right, finding problems solved in a way that is all nacient to us, so, thank you.
Excited to keep kids in school.
Yeah. Yes.
Again, yeah.
Thank you. All right, um, now we have public comments and questions on agenda business, thanks Diane. Did I miss something?
Yeah, we do have a building update, um, sorry, from the high school. Uh, what we decided to do as a district, we've done this in the past, is that every year, every, um, board meeting, update you with something that's going on great within our buildings. Um, so Megan Kozlowski's here to talk to us a little bit about one of our big initiatives at the high school.
Whatever makes you comfortable. Yeah. Um, okay, so I was gonna talk with you about the, uh, MTSS program that we, um, we're bringing on board, really trying to step up from the, at the high school level. Um, so, uh, Jenny Gieselman and Gwen Stein are two teachers that have, together they've taken it on, they're our, our new MTSS building coordinators at the high school. Um, and we've got it as well, so we've got a meeting in fact tomorrow after school, that's what we're gonna be spending some time with, um, teachers working on at the MTSS program. But I kind of explained what we're doing, so MTSS, not, uh, it's the multi-tiered systems of support, and it's a systematic way of making sure that um, any students in need of support, not just those qualifying for formal support, like students by APs, are getting that support, that we're catching them earlier, as early as possible, um, whether it's academic support, behavior supports, uh, attendance, and attendance is a struggle, putting them in touch with resources, but just really trying to identify any students that might be struggling. Um, the reason there's a need for that is that if, if you look at our test scores, our standardized test scores, for, so for example, tenth, sorry, twelfth, eleventh graders, so S H T P, S H T T's, um, of the students who, um, showed that they needed marked improvement, for the, our twelfth graders, seventy-eight percent of those students who need assistance are not formally qualifying for formal assistance, so they're not special education students currently or student services. For our eleventh graders, um, that number is seventy-three percent not qualifying for, for, for most of them. And then looking at our ninth and tenth graders, so those are separated into reading and math scores, um, for reading, for our tenth grader, sixty-nine percent are not getting formal supports in reading, sixty-three percent in math, and for ninth grade, it's seventy percent in reading, and sixty-four percent now. So that's kind of the need that we really wanted to address, so those students who are underperforming, who are struggling, but not to the point where they're qualified for formal support. Um, so, I'm gonna dance aside, there's a little diagram, I'm just trying to explain, so with MTSS, there's three tiers of support, the first one, tier one, that's the largest trumpet at the bottom, so that's for classroom instruction, that's building expectations for, um, behavior and attendance, um, the, the programs and systems that we have in place for all students. And most of the students are going to be successful there. And then you're gonna get some, uh, small group intervention there for tier two, so some of those students are struggling a little bit, and might need a little bit of extra support, um, a check-in, maybe a group, uh, you know, meetings during lunch, or, you know, how are best, but since their schedule, and then from there, they'll be able to make some of those things to get them to where they need to be. And then tier three would be those students who need, you know, very targeted intervention, they're still struggling despite, you know, the high quality curriculum that, that we've put in place, um, despite some small groups that they might be working in, they still are struggling. So those are the, kind of the three tiers in a nutshell, that we're working to, um, you know, see where our students fall and intervene where we can. Um, so tier one, so so that's what's in place for everybody, high quality curriculum. Um, that's the first step in making sure that we have that, and so, you know, we've started kind of reviewing and making sure, uh, you know, the math department has curriculum points that can even help that, if there's any updates that need to take place, that, that is discussed. Um, and then that student mana, student learning is monitored regularly, um, so that we know students struggling academically. Based on student learning, um, you know, do we need to supply some intervention, some support to help students who are struggling, or if students get it, and they're ready to move on to supplement and, and challenge them a little bit more. And then again, most students will get what they need at tier one. If not, they might move to tier two or tier three, depending on how much they are struggling. Uh, I attached in there the, the link to the MTSS referral form that, uh, the MTSS committee developed. And so if a teacher identifies that a student is struggling academically, whether it be, you know, on their own, just as that teacher, or in some of these groups and these meetings that we'll have regularly, and that we've already had, started to have, then they would complete the MTSS referral. That would take it over to our coordinators then, Jenny Gieselman and Gwen Stein, to review more closely, um, to maybe get in touch with parents, to get some input, to do a little bit of digging, and then when we have one of our meetings to discuss and make sure that we're getting some targeted intervention for those students. Again, that, the intervention can be academic, um, done by content area, um, it can be behavioral, it can be dependence, putting students in touch with resources that they need. One of the things that we've done as a team in high school is teachers have met, um, within their content areas to pull together what sorts of resources and interventions we have, if a student is struggling, or if a student does need, you know, some supplemental, um, material to challenge themselves, so that there's a bank that teachers can turn to and pull from. And then they've started thinking about, okay, maybe there's an area that we see that some of our students are struggling, we don't have something to pull from, so they can do some research to find, uh, an intervention or a tool, a resource, that would be worth investing in in order to better help our students. Um, and then we also had teachers meet as, um, grade level teams, to really see, okay, this student is struggling in math, what they're doing, you know, fine, and science, social studies, and English, then it might be more of just an academic intervention that's needed in math specifically versus, you know, attendance, so maybe their, their grades are okay, but their attendance is terrible, so let's reach out and do, see what we can help in terms of attendance. So there's kind of two different levels or two different ways that we've been teaming to address student concerns, that's content area and then um, as a grade level, to really try and identify what needs to be, how, that we can help to address. Um, next up, so I mentioned tomorrow, tomorrow after school, there is a staff meeting in the media center where teachers will be working in teams, uh, they've already worked and identified students at each grade level, um, that need supports. And so tomorrow, those students that have been identified, we're gonna go through, um, they've, parents have supplied us with some additional insight and information, so those teacher teams are going to review the information that the parents helped provide, they're gonna review that bank of resources that we've already identified, um, and see what sorts of interventions they can help, or they can, they can put in place and then monitor from there. And those interventions will be monitored every six weeks, we've got MTSS meetings, um, and then if that students, they'll get identified, that additional students might get identified, this process would start with them.
I have one question. So once a child's been identified in the MTSS, is there like a threshold that once they're doing better, they can follow up, or do they continuously check in with them, just maybe they drop down the tiers, or is that fluid, or?
Good question, it is, it is fluid, um, so, the way that it's, I've heard it described, it's like a highway, kind of like an on-off ramp, right? So like, the student might be identified as needing some support, so they get on, you get them support, the support, you monitor it regularly, they're showing um, that they've improved, you slowly start pulling some of that support away and make sure that they're, they're continuing to do okay. And if they do continue to, you know, perform well, um, then they might kind of graduate or get off the highway, get off the MTSS, but then they can always get back on, I think, okay. So it's a continuous.
Thank you.
Thank you for working on it, I'm really pleased to hear this, this is much needed, I think, by many students and parents, so.
And Jenny, Jenny and Gwen have been great, we've done a lot of work.
The percentages that you shared, I have to say, took my breath away. It took my breath away to hear those percentages, so. And on a different front, since we have you here. We, thank you. You've jumped in in the last, well, forever, since you've joined us, you've always jumped in, but, but particularly, and specifically in the past six weeks, month, whatever.
Yeah.
It's been, and I hear your name all over the place with the highest of praise, because you've been all over the place. Touching so many things, um, especially in the last six weeks, jumping in in a way that we could not have asked for more.
Yes, that's been a joy, working with, like, great staff and, yeah, the community, I've really enjoyed it.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. I apologize for jumping ahead. Um, we now have public comments, no questions. No hands raised over here. Okay. Thank you. Now we'll move on to, uh, approving our consent agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Please, the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Part.
Um, any discussion on that? If not, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Kimberly Smith Colaga.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes.
Yes.
Jeff Zolki.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes.
Lisa Caluna.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes. Next, we have our information and discussion items, which include the finance report by Jan.
Passing around a, um, just a schedule, I, I just wanted to make the board feel comfortable that we're proceeding with the sales of bonds. Um, this is coming around, as you can see on the first page, sorry, Hillary. The, the top page is really just our, um, timeline. Um, this timeline is no different than all six of the refundings that we've done the past several years, so this is very familiar to me. There are a lot of steps, but we have a big team involved, um, we have our bond counsel, we have our financial artist, you know, not, our underwriter, so this is a big team event. Um, the second page, I just wanted to let you know, kind of the highlights here, um, we're going to be receiving our series one, uh, funds on, uh, March sixteenth. And the amount of twenty point nine million, just as a reminder, those monies, I'll be setting up a separate, um, capital project sponsor for current, uh, bank, Mileoff. And, uh, so those monies will be directly deposited into that fund on March sixteenth. Um, there's a ratifying resolution that right now needs to be adopted on March fourteenth, I know we don't have our calendar, so if we're not gonna have a meeting that night, see if I can change the closing and, but on to the next week. Um, so that we can, or so that the board can adopt on the twenty-first. Um, second series, just real quick, on May, May of twenty twenty-five, we'll be selling the, uh, second series of bonds, uh, receiving five point two million. Um, about twenty thirty-two, we anticipate a large knowledge reduction for the community, so that's good news, we're still on track for that. And then we'll be bond-free, debt-free, and, uh, barring any, any new bond money in, uh, in twenty forty-one, that's still on track, so. It's just some highlights of some dates, and, um, other than that, we're in good shape, we've got the projects started, we've got the money coming to fund the projects, so, uh, we're doing ground money.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you for sharing this, this is very helpful.
Okay, you lost it.
Just a few days, she says.
Yeah, just a few days, first of all, I thought it was a school, I thought it was a school.
Yeah, I know.
When's homecoming? Yeah, I was looking, I'm worried about where she was.
Okay, more on finance stuff.
Thank you for breaking it down, like, remember who's doing what, where?
Yeah. Yeah. Colors, I mean, this is phenomenal. Very impressed.
Our underwriter did that, so. No, that's a good system, but, though, thank you. Yeah. Okay, very helpful.
Well said.
Thank you. Thank you, Jan. Much appreciated. Okay, now we get to move on to our rather long list of first meeting of the year, action items. Who's excited? So, lots of motions. And we'll just work through it, okay? So first, we get to, uh, address the appointment of a temporary chair perfect, per, chairperson at this rate, woo! The election of president. Do I have a motion?
Move that Maria Shrebing, I'm sorry, Maria, I thought hoping, I said the last name correctly, serve as temporary chairperson for the selection of a president.
Support. Any discussion? Hearing none? Uh, I'm pausing for a moment.
Roll call.
We have to have a roll call.
We voted, it was a motion, it's gotta be voted on.
Okay. Um, there's other ways of voting.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, we'll go with roll call, may I have a roll call?
Melissa Clark, yes. Kimberly Smith Colaga.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes.
Yes.
Jeff Zolki.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes.
Lisa Caluna.
Yes.
All right, um, the next item on the agenda is the election of our president. I will accept nominations at this time. Does anyone have a nomination for president?
I nominate Diane Salter.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Support. Are there any other nominations for president? Seeing none. The nominations are declared closed, and has been moved and supported to elect Diane Salter as president. Um, can we do a roll call vote, please? Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Lisa Caluna.
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Therefore, Diane Salter, your declared president of the Brandon Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you, members. I really appreciate it. And I'm going to say this, it's going to be one tough cookie to follow. And I want to thank Lisa for a great year that she led us and I, how much I was appreciative.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next, I'm going to see the nominations for election of vice president. Do I have a nomination for vice president?
Move to elect Melissa Clark as vice president for the 2022 calendar year. Support.
Okay, any discussion or anybody else's nomination for vice president? Having none, could I have a roll call vote, please, Maria?
Yes. Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Melissa, I'm anxious. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to see nominations for the position of secretary. Do I have a nomination, please?
Move select Kimberly Smith Colaga as secretary for the two, oh, do I not do that?
You can do that.
Rocket.
22 calendar year, January 1st through December 31st, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Thank you. Is there any other nominations for position of secretary? Having none, can I get a roll call vote, please, Maria?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Congratulations, Kim.
Thanks. I don't have a gavel.
Well, I was going to, should we pass over a roll call list to Kim? And she can take over for the rest of this.
Right now.
The rest of the, just reading names.
Or I can do it if you don't mind. I don't mind. I don't mind.
Yeah, just go over the names and just, yep.
All right, you just sell them and check them.
Don't reveal the magic. It's a very hard job. You just gave it away.
Okay, next, I'm seeking nominations for the position of treasurer for this calendar year. Do I have a nomination, please?
I nominate Rebecca Haines. Support.
Any other nominations for treasurer? Having none, if I could have a roll call vote, please, Kim?
Okay. Lisa Kavaluna?
Yep.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yeah.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations. Welcome as treasurer, Rebecca. Thank you. Okay, next, item F, like Frank, resolution to set the date, time, and place for regular monthly meetings. Could I have a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education adopt the resolution as presented.
Support.
Okay, and what we did is so everybody realizes this, January, obviously, we're here on the second week. February will also be the second week of the month. And December is moved to the second week of the month. And everything else stays the third Monday of the month, but we just did those through the holidays. I don't know if anybody else has any other discussion on this. Having none, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga? Yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, next, a motion to request the approval of depositories for school funds. Could I get a motion, please?
Move to name Waterford Bank, formerly Clarkston State Bank, the Bank of New York, U.S. Bank Michigan School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus and Fifth Third Bank as depositories for Brandon School District and Michigan School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus as the authorized investment broker.
Can I have a second?
Support.
Okay, and basically, these are typical, we do routine every year that we do in the beginning of the year, but I don't know if anybody has any questions. Having none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Okay, next, a motion to designate person to serve as a contracting agent. Could I have a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate interim superintendent of schools to serve as contracting agents to sign agreements and contracts for Brandon School District.
Support.
Any discussion on that? Having none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga, yes. Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Next, can I have a motion to designate persons authorizing, authorized to sign checks?
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the interim superintendent of schools or the Board of Education president as the authorized person to sign checks for Brandon School District.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to designate person authorized to sign purchase orders?
Move the Brandon, go for it. Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the executive director of business services as the authorized person to sign purchase orders for Brandon School District.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to designate person to serve as electronic transfer officer?
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the executive director of business services as the authorized electronic transfer officer for the Brandon School District.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, roll call vote, please?
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to establish fees charged for individuals requesting notice of board meetings?
Move the Brandon Board of Education establish a fee of $1 per notice via postal mail for individuals requesting notice of board meetings.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, roll call vote, please?
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga, yes. Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Okay, next, if I could have a motion to establish board compensation.
Move the Brandon Board of Education establish zero per member as compensation. $0, I apologize, per member as compensation for the 2022 calendar year, January 1 to December 31, 2022. Support.
Okay, any discussion? Thank you on that, Lisa. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
The motion passes. Could I get a motion to designate person to post vacancies and accept resignations?
Move the board, go for it.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, where am I at? Sorry. Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the interim superintendent of schools or his/her designate to post vacancies and accept resignations.
Support.
Any discussion on that?
Sorry, my eyes crossed.
Okay, having none, roll call vote, please?
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga, yes. Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to designate person to post public notices?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve interim superintendent of schools or his/her designate to post public notices.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, roll call vote, please?
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, and now we're delegation of recording secretary duties. It says by the secretary of the board, but I believe Maria, her name goes in this.
Yeah. Wait, Kim says it first.
Kim says it first, so I'll let somebody read it.
Yeah, Maria, so Kim does it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
So I, Kimberly Smith Colaga, as secretary of the board, delegate Maria Schubert to serve as recording secretary for the Brandon Board of Education. Support.
Sounds good.
Perfect.
Any discussion? Having none, roll call vote, please?
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Okay, here comes the fun part. And everybody's here, so we can nominate who's not here. But we have two areas that we like and need a board member to step up and be like, I call it the rep and keep us informed. And the first will be assignment of Board of Education representatives to the Michigan Association of School Boards. Could I have a motion, please?
Is anybody interested?
Or is anybody interested, that would take it.
If you guys think it puts an open job.
I love it. So motion for Hillary, if I could have a please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education appoint Hillary Stikowski as its representative to the Michigan Association of School Boards.
Support.
Okay, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Okay, next, anybody, so we can fill in a name of interested in the Oakland Schools rep?
I can do it again if somebody wants to.
Thank you, Melissa.
She knew anybody to talk. She was like, let's go.
Can I have a motion for the assignment of the Board of Education representative, AKA Melissa, to the Oakland County Intermediate School District?
Move the Brandon Board of Education appoint Melissa Clark as its representative to the Oakland County Intermediate School District.
Support.
Okay, roll call vote, please?
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Okay, next, a motion for the appointment of the designated spokesperson for the Board of Education.
Move the Brandon Board of Education president slash designate be appointed the designated spokesperson for the Board of Education.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Okay, next, a motion to the approval of authorized purchase card users.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the employee position titles authorized to use district credit debit purchase cards in conducting of district business as presented.
Support.
Roll call vote, please?
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stikowski?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Okay, next, on our agenda, the approval of an interim superintendent contract. If I get a motion, I add it to the discussion? Or do people want me to say something beforehand?
We can move it in the new discussion if you like.
Can I get a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the interim superintendent contract for Dr. Gary Richards as presented.
Support.
Okay, and I just wanted to say that this agenda item was to discuss a vote on a contract for a temporary interim superintendent to come in. Last month, after the departure of Dr. Heidrick, we started the process to identify needs of our district and looking for a short term interim superintendent candidate to lead us through the rest of this school year, being June of 2022. In our search, we received information regarding retired superintendent who would come lead our school district starting on January 27th, 2022, through June 30th, 2022, by the name of Dr. Gary Richards. He comes to us highly qualified and experienced. He has over 10 years as superintendent experience. With that skilled experience, he always possesses a unique part of his career. He served as a dual superintendent for both Emily City and Brighton Community Schools. Emily City embraced him in 2016 by honoring him as Emily City's Citizen of the Year and the grand marshal of the Emily City Blueberry Parade. We're voting on a contract that Dr. Gary Richard, Dr. Gary Richards proposed to us. And these were the two key areas. It's pretty typical, the contract. But it's going to be from January 27th of 2022 through June 30th, 2022, with no leave dates. And his salary will be a little over $53,000 for this timeframe. The school board knows that there is a complexity and a specialization needed to run a school district, school building, or being part of our administrative team. Hiring of Dr. Richards for the short term will bring our school buildings back to their administrative levels. Our district is in the process of starting the search process for a permanent superintendent to lead our school district, starting in July of 2022. We voted on and hired Michigan Leadership Institute to assist us with this search. We voted on and hired Michigan Leadership Institute to assist us with this search. We are meeting next month with the Michigan Leadership Institute to plan this process. It is our goal to retain a qualified, motivated, and passionate person who will fit the needs and the core values of our Brandon School District and community. Please stay tuned for the exciting and positive details of the process as they get lined up. But I didn't know if anybody else has any other discussions, comments, questions regarding Dr. Richards?
The only comment I'll make is that is to thank Dan, once again, we all have many times over in numerous ways, I hope, I've tried to, I know, as I have, you all have tried our best to express our appreciation and segueing from what was a very difficult time to our next step, and then our next step after that. And in order to do that, I suggest is more challenging than if you're jumping in and knowing what those next two steps are. You've created an atmosphere that will allow for Dr. Richards to join us. And I was gonna say step in, but I don't think there is such a thing as stepping in the way you did. And so with that, I think that he is coming into this school district better having had you in the position you were in.
And Dan, if I could also announce too, is that Dan will, we've asked of the state board in the superintendent's office assisting with the transfer of duties and getting activated to the school district and community through, I think it's about two weeks at least, so I think February fourteenth. You're up to tell Megan move over a little bit, give me my office. So, but thank you, Dan, I highly appreciate it. And any other discussion, comments? Having none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Motion passes, and welcome Dr. Gary Richards, we're, he's on vacation, but we're gonna get him notified ASAP after this meeting, thank you. Could I get a motion for the approval of human resource report?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the human resource report as presented.
Any discussion? Having none, and again, this is the new hire reads that we just heard from.
Janine and Sarah.
Thank you. And could I get a roll call vote, please?
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Okay, last action item, and one of probably our favorites, the approval of the Brandon High School Student Council overnight trip to the MASC conference.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the student council overnight trip to the MASC Student Leadership Conference in Grand Rapids, Michigan, February twenty-seven through the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, as presented.
Support.
Dan, is this, did last year, did they do this, or was it?
So last year, they did not go on this due to, due to COVID, that they have every other year. It's a great experience for them. They meet with other schools throughout the whole state, where they share leadership, ideas, thoughts, and they actually get to step into leadership roles while it's there. One thing I do wanna mention is that many times in my nine years here, one of our kids have stepped away with state board, being elected to the state board. I believe most, I think the last one was Noah Cox. Those of you guys that remember, remember Noah.
Yes.
We're highly represented there and highly followed at this, at this conference by the rest of the state.
This is a great opportunity for our kids, absolutely. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna?